This is a meeting of the Township Committee, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The notice requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice of this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Asbury Park Press, the Middletown Sun, and the Two of Our Times, and by posting at the Middletown Township Municipal Building, and filing with the Township Clerk on January fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Committeeman Clark.
Here.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Here.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence to honor the troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. First item on tonight's agenda, we have certificates of appreciation for the record. We have a proclamation recognizing May fourteenth through twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, as the National Police Week in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Relay for Life Day in the Township of Middletown. We have a proclamation recognizing May twenty-first through May twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, as National EMS Week. And we have proclamation recognizing May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Memorial Day in the Township of Middletown. And a proclamation recognizing June thirtieth as Pride Month in the Township of Middletown. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have approval of minutes for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting, and the May first, two thousand and twenty-three workshop meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes. Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have introduction of proposed ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three dash three-three-seven-one, an ordinance establishing fair market value for property identified as Block ten forty-five, Lot twelve, four ninety Red Hill Road, Block ten forty-five, Lot two, Nut Swamp Road, Block ten forty-five, Lot three, one-one-one-four, Nut Swamp Road, and Block ten forty-five, Lot four, Dwight Road, within the Township of Middletown, and authorizing acquisition of these properties by purchase or eminent domain for the purpose of maintaining open space and enhancing public recreational opportunities.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held, uh, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, we have ordinance, two thousand and twenty-three dash three-three-seven-two, for introduction, and ordinance amending Chapter two forty-five dash three and Chapter two forty dash seven of the Code of the Township of Middletown, governing filming and, and film permitting fees.
Motion to introduce.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held six, uh, excuse me, June fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, we have, um, a budget resolution on for approval. We have Resolution twenty-three dash one fifty-four, resolution authorizing the Township of Middletown for self-examination of budget. May we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Committeeman Clark. Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt Resolution twenty-three dash one fifty-four. No, we didn't do it yet. It's the next one.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Right, sorry.
At this time, we have Resolution twenty-three dash one thirty, resolution authorizing the municipal budget, operating budget. Would the mayor like to open the public hearing?
Any member of the public wishing to speak on Resolution twenty-three dash one-three-zero, which is the operating budget for the municipality, proposed at the last, introduced at the last meeting? Uh, no? Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, close the public portion and motion to approve.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to approve, uh, Resolution twenty-three dash one thirty, the municipal operating budget. At this time, we have, uh, at this time, we have twenty-three dash one fifty-five, which was be removed from the, uh, agenda because we have adopted the budget.
Mm-hmm.
At this time, I'd like to ask the Township Committee if they would adopt a consent agenda, which would include Resolutions twenty-three dash one fifty-six through twenty-three dash one sixty, removing twenty-three one fifty-eight for a separate vote?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, we have Resolution twenty-three dash one fifty-eight.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I'll make a comment.
Committeeman Clark.
Yes.
Committeewoman Kratz.
Yes.
Committeeman Sedembreno.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Yes.
Mayor Perry.
Yes, just a brief comment on this. I just wanna, uh, thank, um, Stacy Owen and Drew Zimmerman, but I really wanna thank, uh, Stacy's daughter Teddy, who's here today. Um, hi! This, uh, this playground that was just authorized, uh, under Resolution twenty-three dash one fifty-eight authorizes the construction of Middletown's first, uh, all, truly all-inclusive playground that will take the pla- that will be constructed over at McMahon Park. And I wanna thank Drew, and I wanna thank Stacy, but I really wanna thank Teddy for, uh, opening my eyes to the differences between all-inclusive and, and truly all-inclusive. Um, and this wouldn't have been possible without the, the, not sure how many Zooms we did, uh, together reviewing, um, but, uh, the two of you took the time out to advocate for, for your daughter and for those, um, who, who might not be able to take those few steps in a playground and, and show me what that means. So, um, so Teddy, that resolution's for you, so thank you very much. All right, discussion items, Tony?
Yeah, we need to have the discussion. I discussed the possibility of adopting regulations to get particularly smoke shops and, you know, started to see if there were any of them on any fact. Amy has some, uh, come with the Health Department, uh, start with you and give you some thoughts about how we might consider regulating them.
Okay. Turn your mic on.
As Tony said, um, the Health Department, the Township Health Department did some research on what other municipalities and actually the Monmouth County Regional Health Commission have done to address, um, smoke shops, vape shops. And it sort of got, um, us thinking, you know, about Middletown and where they're located in town now. And we've realized there's about five that exist in Middletown now that are smoke shops, vape shops, or cigar shops. And if you take a look at this image that's on the screen, um, this is what Stacy Kraus, our, um, our health planner, put together. But there's three smoke vape shops along Highway thirty-five, and she did a thousand-foot buffer around them. And I'll tell you the reason for that in a minute. But then you've, so you've got three on thirty-five within, you know, close proximity to each other, um, one in Atlantic Highlands, one in Port Monmouth, and then one down here in Linkcroft. All right, so, yep, that's a good point. So, right, the discussion's gonna be whether the, what are the Township Committee's thoughts about either restricting or banning these types of uses? And then do we also consider capturing the delis, the convenience stores, the gas stations, the pharmacies, the grocery stores that sell these electronic smoking devices and vaping devices and filtration devices, which I just snuck. So, all these different types of, um, devices used for smoking, tobacco and other substances. So, there are five, and you know what other towns have done and, and the research that our Health Department did, um, some ban the uses outright, others restrict the uses and try to control them and say they cannot be located within a certain amount of, uh, distance from schools, churches, um, parks, you know, those types of public and community uses. We're here to, to get your feedback, what you would, what you'd like to see in town. Um, and then, you know, out of the interest of the township, uh, you know, the health of the community, of, you know, the community.
I would love to establish like an annual license. Any places that sell these products, they'd have to get an annual license from us, which they pay a fee for, uh, because we wanna inspect them regularly. If we want to have very particular signage about age limitations and all those sorts of things, health, health issues, um, so it would, it would, we would probably include, if we do an ordinance, however we decide to do the ordinance, we'll probably establish like a licensing process.
And so what towns have done is they set like an annual fee, and they can range from five hundred dollars to like fifteen hundred dollars a year for the existing, um, smoke and vape shops that they have to renew every year. And like Tony was saying, that, um, our Health Department could go in there and do inspections and make sure they have the right signage, um, you know. This, these types of uses, they're, um, you have to be twenty-one or older. So just sort of signage, you know, explaining the law of who's supposed to be, you know, who can, who's allowed to buying these, purchasing these products and accessories. So that would come along with this, with this ordinance, is restricting, restricting new uses and then regulating the existing uses that Middletown, um, has. And then in addition to the, you know, outside of the borders of Middletown, there's a handful of these uses, um, in surrounding municipalities. So there's certainly not, uh, you know, there's, there's enough inventory of these shops in the area.
You know, what, what has amazed me is that they require no, uh, or very little, um, from the municipality in terms of just popping up. Um, for, for all the things that we require people to have inspected, all the things that are required by the Department of Community Affairs, you know, uh, any, any of the, the state organizations, departments, um, municipal, and yet a smoke shop can open up and just be open tomorrow, um, uh, in, in, in a pre-existing, um, building. Um, and so I, I, I do think that this is worth a discussion. Um, I think it's, I think it's overdue frankly, and I wanna thank you, Amy, for, you know, and, and Tony and Stacy for, for teaming together and putting something forward, because I, I think this is worthy of a discussion. And, um, you know, frankly, it, it's, it's time to, uh, address this. Um, you know, I, I don't like the appearance of, uh, the, the one on thirty-five in the island. Um, you know, it, it does not look good. Uh, there's, I'm sorry, I mean, it looks terrible. Um, and my other fear is that I can't stop Trenton at any point in time from just passing legislation that allows existing smoke shops or what have you, um, to sell marijuana at, at any point in time, which I know is prohibited by ordinance now by the municipality. But I don't know if that can be overturned, uh, via state legislation in Trenton. So, I mean, I know it can be, but, but, you know, could it, you know, will it? I have no idea. Um, so I, I think this is worthy of discussion. Any other members of the TC? Deputy Mayor?
Uh, yeah, just a real quick, uh, Amy, thank you, uh, Tony, thank you very much. Uh, what are the towns closest to us that require licenses that you're aware of?
The only towns that we have research on, the closest were, well, Monmouth County, the Regional Health Commission, they require fees. Um, but Sayerville, we looked at Sayerville, and then we just kinda get farther, Scataway, but nothing came up with like Homedale or Keansburg or, uh, adjacent municipalities. Atlantic Highlands, no- nothing like this so far.
Yeah, I would, thank you, and I, I appreciate this a lot, uh, something that we need to continue to work on quickly.
Any other member of the TC? Right, Committeeman Clark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one of the other things to consider in this, uh, is exploring the limitation of selling tobacco products as well. Since they've been moved to twenty-one, the original ordinance that we had was based on eighteen, right? So if we're gonna limit vapes, then we should probably consider that as well in, in the same discussion.
Yep, and this would be part of the ordinance. We do have, we would have definitions, it would be for smoke shops, smoke and cigar, and then vape shops too. Yep.
But part of the difficulty with, uh, with trying to regulate this is that, um, it's one thing to open up, um, like, for example, we've had a cigar shop in town for many, many years, right? They're relatively innocuous. Um, but because of the, the move towards, uh, legalizing cannabis, smoke shops are, are opening with more than just, you know, products that we're opening up with paraphernalia that's used, let's face it, primarily to utilize with cannabis. But, um, what the tricky part about it is that we've had, and, and as Amy mentioned before, we have two small, uh, like, convenience store, deli, delicatessens that have now expanded their operation, and they sell these products. So it's not like they come in and say, okay, we're opening up a smoke shop. Well, no, we have a deli, but oh, by the way, we're gonna start selling these products now. So this will, what, what we would hope to do is try to, since we have now, if you count those places, we have eight in town that can sell these products, um, that we would, we would, I don't think we need more than eight. So, I think it's plenty. So prohibit them going forward, but the ones in, that exist, we would license. That's at least the suggestion we oughta, we oughta think about.
Committeewoman Kratz?
Um, thank you, Amy. I, I, and Tony, it's such a, an important discussion. Um, I am the chairperson also for our Municipal Alliance for Drug and Alcohol Prevention here in town. I help run a program and after-school program, a seven-week program for our young students here in town, for our fifth graders and both our eighth graders. Um, it's, it's a topic that comes up time and again. Our young people are having to navigate, you know, walking into convenience stores and, and seeing all of these products. There's, um, needs to be an absolute discussion moving forward about how best to serve our young people and make them aware. We do everything we can on our end, so for them to walk into a store and have all of these products available to them is really disheartening. They're confused by the mixed message also. And, you know, we see based, I have a high schooler, so we, we talk about often about our teachers and our schools having to navigate, you know, kids having vapes, and it is twenty-one is the legal age. So, you know, it's, it's best moving forward to put something in place to, to really talk about putting parameters so that it just can't continue. So I appreciate the discussion and I appreciate, you know, the conversation to put something in place to protect our kids. It's too important.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All right, Amy, thank you. Um, all right, uh, Township Community Comments? Committeeman Clark?
Uh, I left out in my comments earlier, Amy, great job, Tony as well. Um, congratulations, uh, on the hard work that you guys put in to, uh, to get in a fully accessible, um, playground. There's a, there's a great story to come from this, that, you know, avocation and involvement in the community gets things done. And, you know, far too many times we hear stories that, oh, you know, I've said, I've said, and it never happens. Well, you guys are, uh, the proof is in the pudding with you guys, so. Uh, great job, and, uh, great job, Mayor, and rest of the team that helped get that done. That's all I got.
Thank you, Committeeman Clark. Committeeman Sedembreno.
Thank you, Mayor. I think Committeeman Clark has expressed my sentiments again very well, so I have no other comments this evening, thank you.
All right, Committeewoman Kratz?
I'm also good, Mayor, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Good, Mayor, thank you.
All right, um, the, the only other thing I, I just wanted to quickly mention and congratulate, um, is, uh, one of our police officers, Omar Akell, who received, um, the National Association of Police Officer, uh, Police Organizations, um, Top Cop Award, which is a national award, um, down in Washington, DC. So I went down on, um, Friday to DC and got to, uh, meet, um, police officers from all over the world, uh, from all over the country, rather, um, both county, local, federal, law enforcement officials. Um, the PBA Local One Twenty-four was there, uh, Mike Reuter and Anthony Dela Tacoma, along with, uh, Chief Weber. Um, I wanna thank Monmouth County Prosecutor Ray Santiago for being there as well. But we all were there to celebrate, um, an incredible, uh, an incredible police officer and one that saved the, the life of a two-week-old baby last year in Long Branch during a, um, a hostage situation, uh, what? I'm sorry, Keansburg, um, during a hostage situation, Omar Akell, along with, uh, a, a Manalapan police officer and a Howell police officer that make up, um, one of our task force, uh, task forces, um, saved the life of a two-week-old baby, um, and shot and killed the perpetrator that was trying to, trying to not only kill, uh, these police officers, but also harm this, this child. Um, so I, I think that's pretty well-deserving of, of a top cop award. But I, I do wanna say, um, there were about eight police departments that were recognized while we were down there. And if you don't appreciate every second, the effort that the men and women of law enforcement put in day in and day out, you should go have to watch those videos, you should have to watch those body cameras, uh, footage, because, um, you, you have a, you have a, a new perspective when you see it from that angle. Um, the number of police officers that weren't able to get their award because they were killed in the line of duty, the number of police officers who were shot in the head, that were shot, uh, and, and wounded where they were in hospitals for months, some still have not returned to duty. Um, you have, you really get an unbelievable perspective. So the next time you, you, you have a, a feeling that a, a police officer is treating you unfairly, just remember that they have a family to go home to as well. And some of those that were recognized the other day, um, didn't. And their families were there to accept those awards because, uh, they're no longer with us. So, um, I wanna congratulate Officer Akell. I wanna thank him for his service, thank all the Middletown police officers, and, and thank all the police officers that were there and weren't there, um, on Friday to receive their Top Cop Awards as well. So, um, with that being said, I'll open up for public comment. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment may do so. Uh, we ask that you state your name and address for the record and to keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute remaining. Any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Melanie, come on down.
Um, just two quick questions. Uh, Melanie Elmeyer, uh, forty-three, Green Tree Terrace and Linkcroft. Um, the first one is about the, um, purchase of the land, uh, potentially the introduction of the ordinance for the Nut Swamp Road in Linkcroft. Um, could that potentially get a green acre status? Or it's too soon to even examine that?
Hang on one second. Um, so, so this is a, a completely wooded area.
Right, and it kinda goes down.
It, it has a massive slope to it, wetlands, an environmentally sensitive area that at this point in time, a developer is trying to build five hundred units on, on this property, um, on, on an absolutely wooded piece of property. Um, and the Township Committee has rightfully, and I wanna thank all of them, for standing up and, and utilizing, um, the powers that we possess to preserve this land for the purposes of open space.
Okay, so.
So they will wind up as green acres.
So it would, when, would end up as that?
They give the administrator answer.
Okay, okay. My second, uh, concern is about, um, the smoke shop regulations. Um, I guess a smoke shop has to be defined. Is it only a place that you can sell smoking items? Or what about places where you can just go and smoke and hang out and leave your cigars there, and it's like, uh?
A club.
A club, because all the towns.
Those things will have to be decided when we introduce the ordinance. Those, all those types of things will have to be defined within that ordinance.
Okay.
So, but I, I know that at the last meeting you spoke about, um, I can't remember.
Concern, yeah, concern over, um, that type of use, especially close to schools. Um, so if they, just two other things.
Two, two schools.
Right.
With St. Leo's and, and Linkcroft, yeah.
Yes, um, so two other things I hope you would consider as you're kind of hashing it out is, um, the garbage that those places generate. I mean, I, we clean up in Linkcroft, a lot of us will just, you know, collect bags around the park and things. There is so much vaping material all over the ground. Um, same thing with liquor stores with the little bottles. But, um, I feel like those types of places don't ever pick up around their store. And I think that should be another requirement, that they, that they have daily maintenance from their staff to, to clean up anything that's discarded, because sometimes people discard things that aren't completely used. Um, and then the distance between, I, I think that should be pretty high. Um, I think Red Bank started with a thousand feet. That's another town to look carefully at because they're wrangling with it. Um, you know, because of a club, it was considered to move from a thousand feet to two hundred and fifty feet.
Yet, yet they're willing to sit there and continue to add marijuana shops.
Right, and they have the two.
Two within three hundred.
Smoke shop.
Two within three hundred and fifty feet of each other.
And next to a park, too. If there's a park there, that would be another, another prohibited, uh, closeness. So I just hope that, you know, the whole, um, everything is considered with that to make it tighter.
Fully vetted, uh, ordinance.
Okay.
Thanks.
All good, thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, sir.
My name's Sean McGrath, I live on four sixty Everett Road. My property actually backs up right to those lots that you guys brought up today. It's five hundred units, I can't, I mean, there's no sewer there. I mean, we, my boys and I walk around there all the time. There's at least three natural springs, there's streams running through it. There's, I mean, it's, it's hilly. How likely, I mean, now that I've heard, I can't, this is the first, I mean, this is the first I've heard about. I mean, how likely is it they're gonna get five hundred units? I mean, the zoning's like one and a quarter acre residential now, isn't it?
Well, the act- the action that we introduced tonight would prevent that entirely.
Oh, that's, is there anything else I can do to, I mean, I don't, I mean, five hundred units is insane.
Close to the ground, there might be in the future.
Yeah.
Right.
Um, the, they're, the tone and tenor that was set in the initial conversations of this proved to me exactly what the intent of this was, and that was to build five hundred units on a piece of property that could fit four single-family houses? Maybe?
Yeah, I mean, there was a private study done. I mean, I know, I've lived there for twenty years. I mean, about ten years ago, they did a private study, and I talked to the contractors, and they said at most they could get ten, eleven houses at most. I mean, that's what they were gunning for, and that was ten years ago. I can't believe that someone would try to do five hundred units.
I, I wish I could say that I can't believe it, but I absolutely can with the tone and, and, and the, uh, actions, or, or actually frankly, lack of action by anyone to address the POA mandates and just the chokehold that, um, those mandates have on the potential preservation of open space in the state of New Jersey. You cannot be for the preservation of open space and an unregulated, um, allotment of affordable housing and development to just occur unchecked by anyone. And unfortunately, the courts have, um, have been left to basically handle what, what is the legislature's job, um, and, and that's to fix this. But, uh, the, the retaining walls, the infrastructure, the destruction of a perfectly wooded area is, and the suggestion that you can. is, and the suggestion that you can fit 500 units back there is laughable. It's laughable. So the action that the township committee is taking tonight is, is to basically set those fair market values, which we've had a, an appraiser go and get the value of those properties. So we're able to set forth that value within the ordinance and also give our township attorney the ability then to in good faith, negotiate with the owners of that property, the acquisition, as well as if, if that is unsuccessful, go forth with the use of eminent domain to forever preserve that property for open space.
Oh, thank, I mean, I really appreciate it. I mean, it's that link of better units, but thank you very much.
Imagine, imagine 500 units and let's just say each apartment had one car going on an unpaved road into what is one of the most narrow areas and blind spots, you know, all over the place, putting 500 units there. Talk about an absolute nightmare. That's, that's, that's one.
Well, thank you very much.
You got it. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name, my name's Bill Donnelly at nine, nine Manchester Court. You know, you guys typically have a pretty thankless job and I'm here to thank you because I happen to be Teddy's grandfather. And I want to thank you all for her, for Drew, for her parents and for all the special needs kids that you finally did, did something. I've lived in this town. I'm 68 years old. I've only lived, I've lived here for 57 of those 68 years. And the speed at which you guys moved this time is probably the fastest I've ever seen. And I want to thank you for that and thank you for, and thank you for what you've done for all the children that need that part. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Vince Moran, 39, Breevent, Leonardo. On the 29th and the 30th of last month, that Saturday and Sunday, we had all that rain. Okay. Highway 36 was completely flooded from Thompson Avenue to Leonard, to Viola, Vanderbilt. Okay. And on Breevent. Due to the fact, the DOT was out there on Saturday and they were trying to pump the water from one su, one storm drain to the next storm drain to the next storm drain. Okay. Problem was, is that the creek. Okay. Right where you're going into the hockey rink or Sanford and Son, what you want to call it. Okay. All right.
I like that name.
You like that, huh? I do so. All right. On the right hand side was completely plugged. Water could not go through. On the opposite side of it, the same thing. So the water was coming up, down Breevent, going down and then going back into the creek on Breevent. Then it got so bad on Saturday, on Sunday, the outfield and the left field was completely underwater to the tennis court. I walked back there. There's nine trees down blocking this creek. And that's stopping the water from flowing. Now I can't get in back any further, back towards Highland Avenue. I can't get back in there to see what's blocking that. But that's the first time that I've been there in 50 years that I ever seen that outfield flood. Not even through Sandy. Okay. So this creek has to be taken care of. Okay. There was an engineer that came to my house. I don't know. And he was, he wanted to know where was the town property end and the state property end? I knew exactly where it is. It's right where Cheers is. You know where I'm talking about? Right on Vanderbilt. Right. Odell's, the plumber there. All right. It ends right there and then we take over from the rest of the way to the bay. And he was looking at it.
State engineer knocked on your door and asked you?
I don't know. I, I pulled in my driveway and this guy was walking out of my driveway.
Yeah, by deal?
Like, what, what are you coming to me? Well, the long story is that a friend of mine knew what I was talking about. He worked for the DOT and he sent him, sent him over to me to show, sent him to me to find out where the property started, where the property ended. The state property ended and it start, and it's the town property starts. Okay. Right, it's right in the corner. It, it, I, you have to actually see it.
Okay.
Okay. But this, this thing is going to have to be cleaned out because that water was passed on Sunday. It was actually, like I said, passed my house up on the curb to Washington. I don't want to get hit with flood insurance, boys. Yes. That's what I'm, that's what I'm afraid of. So we need, we need actually need to get this thing cleaned out and all the way probably to the bay. Cause it's completely overgrown. All right.
You got it.
All right.
We'll have the guys go cut out the trees, right Ted?
Okay. That's all I, oh, and one other thing, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Down by the monument, Mardine Drive. One of the state employees cut the dunes.
Excuse me? One of the state employees?
Blazed from the marina, from marina, cut the doom. Okay. Where, um, okay. Right next to where the monument is. You'll, okay, you come over and then there's a little groove and then it was there. You know what I'm talking about? He cut that out from that storm. Mardine Drive now washed.
You know why they cut that dune?
No, I don't.
I can tell you why.
Why?
So where they buried the dolphin.
No, no, this is before the dolphin. Sorry. This, this is before the dive.
They had a backhoe on that dune.
Pardon?
They had a, they had a backhoe on that dune. When that, when they, when they were getting rid of that dolphin, burying.
Okay, but where you were, were you seeing that groove where I'm talking about? Okay, that was done before, before the dolphin. That was a doom. Okay. Now, if you go down, right down over, next to it right now, Mardine Drive is washed out about 30 feet because the water's coming up that.
So what, why'd they cut the dune?
I, I, you know what? I wish I could tell you.
All right, Tom, can you check it with that?
Okay. I, I wish you could, I wish I could tell you.
Tony will contact the DE page.
Okay.
And we'll get back to you on that one, all right?
Okay. Thank you.
You got it. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Don?
Welcome.
You ain't heard nothing yet.
Good evening. My name's Don Watson, living at 1 Collinson Drive. This, earlier versions of this ordinance about the open space stuff did not have a lot of the addresses here. So I went on the township website to the GIS map system to look for these. It stills not working. You can't put in a block and lot number and locate anything. Cause it just doesn't function. I know I mentioned this in the past. Might not have been this year. Maybe last fall or something. But it would be great if we have the engineering firms that are doing these maps for us actually make them work.
So are we able to, are you able to look up the block and lots? Have we had issues?
On the public side. And when you should be able to.
Of course you should. Tomorrow. That's what Annie said. Tomorrow never comes. You think that's funny? Yeah, check it out. Thanks, Joe.
Okay. All right. Yeah.
Yeah. I think you were going to check it out last time I brought this up. Anyway.
You're the only one that sold us that, that there haven't an issue. I haven't, I haven't, at least to me, I haven't heard it otherwise.
You're on the right side. I want to talk about street sweepers. I think we bought some new street sweepers. My street was supposed to be the first one you said. You said?
It was. It happened.
No, it wasn't. Never.
You just weren't home that day.
Never happened. Never. It was early. I'm up at five. I know you guys aren't up. Anyway. My wife was driving around beginning of the week and there was a county street sweeper out on Cherry Tree.
Yep. It did Cherry Tree and Leonardville the other day.
Right. With big piles of brush on the side of the road. So they're going around all of this brush. So they're not cleaning the street. But anyway, she called the county up.
When people put the brush out too late, it's.
No, this is the time right now for the zone.
For that zone? It's the time right now, Ted? I thought they were already past.
Yeah. Cause I'm in that zone. Maybe I put mine out early. Wait a minute.
I thought so.
Should be done, but this stuff has been there for a while. She called the county and some guy, Mark, she talked to in the highway division. He said that this is a 100 year old process that the county in Middletown has. And Middletown calls them up and tells them when to clean these streets. Okay. I don't know if we had street sweepers 100 years ago, but anyway.
They were just people.
Yeah, there were people with brooms. That's what I told her. But anyway. You know, she was trying to explain to him about the, the brush and stuff in the street. And, you know, how he, the guy driving a street sweeper should have called up his boss and said, there's all this stuff in the street that we can't street, sweep the street. So he got so irate, he says, I don't have to talk to you anymore. So she found out who his boss was and talked to him. But anyway. Brush has been collected in my neighborhood. Thank you very much. But now we got like brown stains on the sides of the roads. And now we could use the street sweepers.
As soon as the brush is done, the street sweeper will go out.
Brushes, brushes done in my neighborhood.
In your neighborhood, but not throughout the town.
No, but when you finish an area, you should clean the streets. Cause all of that stuff is getting washed into the storm drains. And that's something that we're supposed to be priding ourselves about.
The problem is the same guys that are collecting brush are the ones that are going to be driving the street sweep. So.
So you know how to drive a street sweeper?
I don't actually. I would love to. You don't actually, I don't think.
No. Think? Something Ted can do.
I'd love to.
Train them how to drive it. You just got to drive.
I'm not going to lie, I'd probably do it.
But anyway. It would be very helpful if we cleaned the streets after we pick up all this brush that's been put out there so early and it's mulching in the street. So we got brown stains on the sides of the roads.
Ted, we're ahead of schedule this year. Was that correct?
We're right on schedule with the brush and, you know, and also just for the record, we're awaiting delivery of a new street sweeper we bought, you know, last year. It's taken a while to come, so we will have a brand new street sweeper and we'll bring it over to Collins and Drive.
He just said that they did my street already with the new street.
We have an old one. We have an old one.
And if, and if we're ahead of schedule, one of them guys can afford to jump in the street sweeper.
Let's say it's our newest street sweeper.
It was Ted and I.
A broom.
I got brooms if you need broom. Stop over. I say, thank you for your time.
Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? You good, Bruce? You were, you were ponder, you were pondering it back there. I, I, I did. I did. Bruce, I'm going to do it for a five minute.
Bruce Stafford, 39, Brain Art, Port Monmouth. Getting back to what Don said about the brush. In my area, and don't quote me on this, but I think it was May 1st, May 14th that they were scheduled to pick up. Okay. Public Works did a great job. I don't want to say they showed up on the first, okay? But it was right around there. And I know all of yous know that once they go through and they pick up, they're not coming back. There was some huge piles over there that were there for the better part of a year that were picked up. Okay. But once people see them picking up those piles, they continue to put stuff out in the street. So quantity wise, there's actually more stops over there now in my area to pick up. Okay. Because people just keep putting it out. Public Works went through and they picked up already. And I think you guys made it perfectly clear that once you go through, you're not coming back. We used to get two pickups in our area, especially for leaf. But I've seen it in numerous locations that you said, once you go through, that's it. So maybe, uh.
Dan, if you do, Dan, if you don't.
Right. Now I think it's in the hands of the code enforcer, who's probably not going to want to do it, but he's going to have to knock on some doors.
They do it. They leave, they leave a letter in your mailbox.
Yeah.
Hybel gets it every year.
The problem with that process is that, yeah, they.
And you know.
Go out.
Bruce.
And then eventually they have to issue a summons.
Bruce, I personally sign Hybels too.
Okay.
I personally sign Hybels. It's the only one I sign for Leaf Collection when they don't put it out. And Ted signs the rest of them, but Rick's assigned.
Well, I haven't seen it recently, but in the past, if I remember correctly, for those that put it out after the trucks go through and pick it up, there was a $1,200 charge. I don't see that anymore. You know what I mean? Because if the town has to send guys out to pick it up.
It's, I think, I think that's, that's the link.
Yeah, that's still in the letter. But we basically tell people is they have a week to dispose of themselves.
The cards that go out, I haven't seen it on the cards. The recycle card.
Should be on there, but we do, on the letter that the mayor is referring to, it does say there's a fine. And you, we give them a week or so to get it off the street.
All right. Well, the big thing right now is, like I said, stop wise, there's more stops as far as pickups out there now than when the township initially went through. People don't read, I guess, or they don't see it on the internet. I don't know what it is, but if you get the chance and you drive over there, there's a lot out there.